Here we go. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, American Commission Meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting this fine June 27, 2019. Our invocation will be our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Mike Gow.
Father in heaven, we bow before thee in gratitude for the many blessings that we've received at thy hand. This time we thank thee for the opportunity we have to gather together, to assemble as citizens and as a governing body to discuss and transact the business for the City of Douglas. We're grateful for our employees, for their dedication to their jobs, and for the services they render for our citizens. We're thankful for our citizens here, for the support they give to our community, and for all the good and services they provide. This time we thank you for the freedom that we enjoy here in this country. We acknowledge thy hand in the creation and setting up and inspiring our founding fathers to draft the Declaration of Independence and our Constitution as a body of law to help guarantee the freedoms that have been endowed by thee from thy hand. We are grateful for all the men and women who have stood for freedom and in defense of freedom, not only for our country but even for other countries throughout the years, and for the sacrifices that have been made. We ask that thou would continue to bless us as a community and as a country. Help us to remember that the freedoms that we have and we enjoy come at thy hand and are a direct result from our obedience to thy laws and commandments. Help us to remember that the greatness of our nation comes not, and is not merely consists of beautiful buildings and economic prosperity, but comes as a direct result and is reflected by obedience to thy laws and from following example thy Son Jesus Christ. We pray for inspiration and guidance as we contemplate our duties as an elected body, and we ask for thy blessing upon us and for thy Spirit to guide us. We pray for thy continued guidance and for thy Spirit to be upon our employees and upon our citizens as well. Help us to work together to make our community even better than it already is. Help us look out for each other and to serve one another and to respect the rights of every citizen here. We love thee and we ask for these things in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next on the agenda, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And would you please stand as the Coffey County Navy Junior ROTC leaders in the pledge. Tonight, we have Master Chief Lee with us and Lieutenant Commander Torres.
Left, detail, left, face, present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms, right, face, forward, march, left, left, right, left.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next, on the agenda, before we do the approval, at number five, right after swearing in of the police officer, we're going to do some recognitions of awards, okay? So right there, after the swearing in of the police officers. You okay with that, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore? Good. All right. At this time, the next on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Slow motion, second.
It's been motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move forward with swearing in our new police officer. Here we go. This is what we talked about. The oath of office, you can violate for violating this oath of office. It's okay. In times when you need us, come to us. If we ask you a question, tell us the truth. We can always help you and we can always be by your side as long as you tell us the truth. If you ever lie and violate this oath of office, we will have no choice but to charge you accordingly. So this is very important, and I need you to listen to the words that the mayor is saying and take it to heart. They've worked 13 weeks so far, and they have done a great job. And, Mr. Mayor, they got tased today. They rode the lightning. So this is just icing on the cake to get sworn in by the mayor, and they rode the lightning today, and they come through it. And we are certainly glad to have you on board, and I want to give recognition to Sergeant Whitman. He's worked with them since they started. They actually were all able to qualify with their firearms before they even went to the academy. So they all did a great job and we're proud of them. Good deal, and rightfully so.
They used real guns.
Yes, real guns. How did the taming speak? It was good? It was right. If you would, please. Would you please raise your right hand? Will we turn this way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. May be the mayor, but everybody's boss is. Y'all ready? You good? Here we go. The City of Douglas Police Department Oath of Office. Aye. State your name.
Sheriff.
Swear or affirm that I will, I will and truthfully discharge the duties of the police officer of the City of Douglas, and that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of my position conscientiously and without malice or partiality to the best of my ability. I further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any public monies due this or any other state or political division unaccounted for and in of foreign states, and I am otherwise qualified to hold said office to which I am appointed, and for as long as I am employed with the City of Douglas Police Department according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state. I do further swear or affirm to obey, to adhere to, to uphold, and to enforce the laws of the United States of America and of the State of Georgia at all times, and do further swear or affirm that I will bear faith and allegiance to the Governor of the State of Georgia, the legal authority appointed over me by the City of Douglas, and the officers appointed over me according to the law. So help me God.
I do.
Outstanding. Please, please join me. At this time, if y'all come over here and stand with this young lady here, y'all can get y'all some good pictures. Oh. Oh, okay. You want to get a picture with mommy? Oh, Sergeant. I want to tell you something.
I know.
As the mayor of the City of Douglas, thank you. Thank you. Because we, the police officers out there, you represent the City of Douglas. You're going to be out there on that road when we're in the bed asleep. You're going to be out there on that road when it's raining, when we're trying to get people off of the road during hurricane season, under lights and stuff like that. Every time a person see you, they see all of them. They see all of them. And we're trying to build a better bridge and relationship with our community. We have coffee with the cops, pizza with the police. We're making a concerted effort. So I think that you are coming into a police department at the right time. And remember, I don't care if you're in civilian clothes, you're still a police officer. I accord you, young individuals are looking up to you, and we have to make sure that we set a good example. Make sure we set a good example. So on behalf of the citizens of Douglas, I am honored to be your mayor, and I look forward to great things, okay? Y'all take care of yourself and God bless you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Go be arrested. Good job. Thank y'all. Y'all come this way. I still got some more reading to do here. Oh, you want them to sign now? Next is Ms. Tammy Wilkinson.
Oh, no.
Yes, anniversary also.
Yes.
How many years?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Okay. We should be bringing Carl up here to get him this.
True. That's true.
We're going to let them sign this. So it has been adjourned.
Thirty-one years.
All right. One more. This is to certify that Ms. Tammy Wilkinson is a certified human resource manager. You ready, Ms. Wilkinson? Here we go. University of Georgia, Carr Benson Institute of Government in partnership with the Georgia Local Government Personnel Association hereby certify that Tammy C. Wilkinson has satisfactorily completed and met the requirements of the Certified Human Resource Manager, June 14, 2019, signed by the President of Georgia Local Government Personnel Association and the President of the University of Georgia. Ms. Wilkinson, congratulations. All right. It's not a badge for sewing something or boiling water.
Boy scout.
We got, we got a club scout.
That's right.
Mayor Pro Tem? There we go. There we go. Camp Thunder.
Rainy mouth.
What is it?
Rainy mouth.
Okay, I like Camp Thunder. Camp Thunder is funny. Okay. Here we go. When we go off to training, we go off to learn how to discharge our duties as elected officials. One of the things I try to tell individuals that I meet, and that's their first time going to training, how long did it take you to recognize that you don't know what you're doing? And you need to be in the class being attentive, so that you will be able to have the understanding and information that is coming towards you. So we go off to training to learn how to discharge our duties. Commissioner Gowen, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner McNeil, and myself, we're gainfully employed. So when we go off to these trainings, we have to take days off. So there's days of vacation that we take away from our family. It cost me two days of vacation to go down there this time. So actually, it takes us a little while alone. So the University of Georgia Carr Benson Institute of Government and the Georgia Municipal Association hereby certify that Mike Gowen has successfully completed the requirements for a certificate of achievement through the Harold L. Holt Municipal Training Institute, June 21, 2019, signed by the President of the Georgia Municipal Association and the President of the University of Georgia. Seventy-two hours. Boy, I really shouldn't have paid attention when I was in school. Here we go. Next is the Cornerstone Community Award. Great Promise Partnership. Whereas Great Partner Partnership is a public-private partnership that empowers and equips at-risk students to complete high school while gaining real-world job experience, creating a path to personal success and the workforce of the future. Engaging with GPP offers Georgia employers an opportunity to address the critical need of recruiting and developing the next generation of workforce talent. And whereas Great Promise Partnership offers under the belief that all sectors of society have responsibility for the success of children, and whereas the leaders of the community of Douglas and Coffey County in the sectors of political, business, educational, and community leaders, the four cornerstones of GPP's success have volunteered to provide workforce opportunities, mentoring, and life skills for students at risk of not graduating. And whereas the community of Douglas and Coffey County has met or surpassed the requirements of becoming a cornerstone community, therefore, Great Promise Partnership Incorporated recognized the City of Douglas and Coffey County as GPP Cornerstone Community Platinum Level on this 24th day of June 2019, signed by the Executive Director and the Southwest Regional Coordinator. Pardon, Platinum.
How come Charlie didn't have to come up there? We only got one lead. Should have called Charlie up there.
Next on the agenda, we have items on the consent agenda. As always, before we take the vote, we will have our city manager announce the items that will put on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. We have six items being brought forward on the consent agenda. There are items one, two, three, four, five, and seven.
That were on forward.
We'll read those now.
Okay.
Just item one, approval of the minutes. Item two, approval of the South Wire fee wable request for the use of the central square gym. Item three, approval of the sale of the columbarium niches at the city cemetery. Item four, approval of declaring equipment as surplus. Item five, approval of alcoholic beverage license for Deans Night Investment Group, LLC. Item seven, approval of the resolution for the Georgia Heritage Grant for the 63rd Army Air Force's Contract Pilot School. And approval of item nine, approval of the adoption of the FY-20 budget. And item 10, approval of the date change of the upcoming meeting to Thursday, July 11th. And that's eight items, not six items.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
It's been motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items for discussion or questions, and I believe we have a couple of them.
We have two items being brought forward from the work session. We have item six from the work session, discuss the appointment to the Air Base Preservation Development Committee, and that is just we're acknowledging that we're going to be running for the next two weeks or until on those positions. We have applicants on it for people to serve on that committee for the Air Force, for the Air Base Preservation and Development Committee.
Okay.
No action tonight on that. Item eight, to discuss the resolution for the Georgia Heritage Grant for the Ashley Slater House, and that'll be Christian Michael from the Community Development Department.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing well.
All right. The Community Development Department would like to seek approval from the city council to approve the resolution for the Georgia Heritage Grant application for the restoration and rehabilitation of the Ashley Slater House due to the recent water damage to the ceiling, roof, walls, and flooring. The grant amount will be roughly $25,000, and the 40% match from the city will be roughly 10.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to bring you up, and like to say, I had talked to the city manager about the situation, about the Ashley House, Slater House, with the leak that was created, I guess, on Ice Thursday. And with talking with him, he was saying that our insurance that we have on without cover, and I'm just not satisfied with that, you know, everything. What's the purpose of having insurance? And they're not for the cover, what we are taking insurance out of, you know, I'm positive that, you know.
Mr. City Manager?
As discussed in the work session, there's probably two things going on there. One, there is some failure of the membrane that is a type of what they call TPO roofing structure, but due to some negligence on maintenance by half our city's maintenance side of things, some of the drains were stopped up, and in all these cases, manufacturers, installers, insurance are looking for, I guess, ways not to pay claims or whatever. And so due to the fact that there was some maintenance issues, everybody's using that as an act of negligence, so therefore, it executes their options not to have to cover that. And that's why we're lucky to have this grant here opportunity. If we do get it, it does cover most of the issues, so we'll be very little out of pocket, you know, and so. And we are working with a manufacturer to cover part of the material piece of it for the roofing piece, so hopefully between what the manufacturer will do and then with the grant, there'll be a net zero. But point duly taken on the maintenance side of things, we do got to look at some maintenance issues.
If we don't get the grant, then where do we go from there?
I mean, roof's got to be fixed, and we've got to pay for it.
I mean, you know, that's the purpose of having insurance, is when things like this happen, you know, we're filing on our insurance. That's my house, anybody's house, city property, you know, and I don't know exactly what we're paying, but we probably paying dearly, you know, for insurance. And I would like for a city attorney, someone to look at, put into it, and just, you know, let them say, hey, it's not our fault. I mean, I don't get on my roof every day to check to see what is up to standard, you know, but if something happened to it, then insurance company come out there, and they might not pay all of it, but they'll pay some adjustments, you know, in favor. But with my understanding, they don't want to pay nothing. But next month or whenever we do pay our insurance for the City of Douglas, they expect us to pay full amount. I just got a problem with that, you know? With them not coming up to what they supposed to be coming up with, you know? I understand it was a flat top, but whenever they insured it, I'm quite sure they took pictures of it, knew it's a flat top, you know? They adjusted for that flat top, being, you know? They adjusted for a triangle top. They adjusted for the flat top, you know? Make sure if they happen over a period of time that they would take care of, you know? That's the way I feel about it, you know?
You good?
I'm good.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, your comments.
Well, I agree with Mr. Taylor. You know, I want to make sure that we pursue whatever means we can to try to get anything out of the insurance policy. You know, I'm sure if y'all haven't finished the review on that, that our management will review that, but I strongly urge that to be done, and I hope that we can get the grant. And of course, like we talked about in the work session, going forward, if we have a maintenance plan and a checklist, and these items that were perhaps not paid attention to in the past are now, you know, regularly reviewed and checked over, so this doesn't happen in the future. That's what, that was my concern. That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner McNeil?
Gosh, this is, you know, of course, outside of my scope of knowledge and authority, and you know, I have a tendency to agree with Commissioner here. We're stewards of the citizens and the city's money, and I think we should use it wisely and be very resourceful. And I know we're at the mercy, at any point in time, any given time, we're at the mercy of an insurance company to pay claims. They can choose to pay or not pay, you know? And so we have to, as you said, we have to go to bat for our cause and our need, and I don't know what we pay in claims. I don't know what the level of coverage, the type of coverage, because this is such a unique structure, the age itself, and the type of building it is. Again, it's a historical facility, and so this is just not a normal homeowner's policy. And I know the insurance company is well aware of that. So, you know, I would hope and would believe that Charlie and, you know, the city manager and these folks have done due diligence and used every reasonable, you know, I think most insurance companies say, reasonable way of taking care of things, you know? It's reasonable. Like you said, we don't get on our roof and examine it every week or every other week or whatever. And but I can appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Taylor, and understand it. I just know, though, that this is, these repairs have got to be done. We got to move on with this, and we need to do it as quickly as possible, because the longer it sits there, and the longer we sit here and trying to make a decision, the worse it gets, whether there's, if there's mildew, mold, or water, moisture in the walls, it's got to be taken care of. So I can appreciate what y'all are doing to try and get this done quickly and at as little cost to the city as possible. So again, this is a double-edged sword here. It can, but I can appreciate both comments, the comments you've made and what, you know, the city manager is trying to do here, too. This will be the least costly to us, and, you know, I think we need to go this route if this is possible.
Mr. Moore?
Well, I could see both sides of it. We bought a pink elephant.
With them not coming up to what they supposed to be coming up with, you know. I understand it was a flat top, but whenever they insured it, I'm quite sure they took pictures of it, knew it's a flat top, you know. They adjusted for that flat top, being, you know. They adjust for triangle top, they adjusted for the flat top, you know. Make sure if they happen over a period of time that they would take care of, you know. That's the way I feel about it, you know.
You good?
I'm good.
Mr. Mayor Prochep, your comments?
Well, I agree with Mr. Taylor. You know, I want to make sure that we pursue whatever means we can to try to get anything out of the insurance policy. You know, I'm sure if y'all haven't finished the review on that, that our management will review that. But I, you know, strongly urge that to be done, and I hope that we can get the grant. And of course, like we talked about in the work session, going forward, if we have a maintenance plan and a checklist and these items that were perhaps not paid attention to in the past are now, you know, regularly reviewed and checked over so this doesn't happen in the future. That's what, that was my concern. That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner McNamara?
Gosh, this is, you know, of course, outside of my scope of, of knowledge and authority. And, you know, I, I have a tendency to agree with, with Commissioner here. We're stewards of the citizens and the city's money, and I think we should use it wisely and be very resourceful. And I know we're at the mercy at any point in time, any, any given time, we're at the point of, we're at the mercy of an insurance company to, to pay claims. They, they can choose to pay or not pay, you know. And so we have to, as you said, we have to go to bat for, for our cause and our need. And I don't know what we pay in claims. I don't know what the level of coverage, the type of coverage, because this is such a unique structure, the age itself and the type of building it is. Again, it's a historical facility. And so I, this is just not a normal homeowner's policy. And I know the insurance company is well aware of that. So, you know, I, I would hope and would believe that Charlie and, you know, the city manager and these folks have done due diligence and used every reasonable, you know, I think most insurance companies say reasonable way of, of taking care of things, you know. It's reasonable. Like you say, we don't get on our roof and examine it every week or every other week or whatever. And, but I can appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Taylor, and understand it. I just know though that this is, these repairs have got to be done. We got to move on with this, and we need to do it as quickly as possible because the longer it sits there and the longer we sit here and trying to make a decision, the worse it gets. Whether there's, if there's mildew, mold, or water, moisture in the walls, it's got to be taken care of. So I can appreciate what y'all are doing to try and get this done quickly and at as little cost to the city as possible. So again, this is a double edged sword here. It can, but I, I can appreciate both, both comments, the comments you've made and what, you know, the city manager is trying to do here too. This will be the least, least costly to us, and, you know, I think we need to go this route if, if this is possible.
Mr. Moore?
Well, I could see both sides of it. We bought a pink elephant or a white elephant, whatever you call it, when we bought the place. And it's going to be a constant cost and upkeep to the taxpayer of city of Douglas. And I don't know that we reaping that much of rewards from owning that building. It seemed like a good idea at that time. But then insurance companies, has, has been said, they insure property and then they pay as little as they can. And I could see that too, I mean, they've got to make money. But yet, I think that there's something needs to give one way or the other. So we just have to do what we have to do, I reckon.
Good day. Well, my two cents is very simple. Roof is leaking, we have to fix it. So I'm in favor of going down this route. And city manager, do you do diligence? And we'll go from there. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
That's all the items from the work session, Mayor.
Staff comments? Do you have any staff comments?
Just want to remind American Commission, tomorrow we do have the employee luncheon, appreciation luncheon. It starts at eleven over at the C U R Center. And right around twelve-thirty, when we give out the service awards for people being twenty-plus years. And so anyway, just wanted to make sure y'all remember that, those that can, starting at eleven o'clock.
Great. Mr. Moore, lead us through this.
Well, I just hope everybody take advantage of that tomorrow to show our appreciation to the employees of the city of Douglas and what makes the city either look good or bad. And we've always looked pretty good as far as I'm concerned. And we just wish for them a lot of luck and keep on keeping on.
Thank you. Commissioner McNamara?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Moore and I had the privilege today, we all had, had the opportunity today. As, as the mayor said, those several of us work and we're not, some were not able to be there. But Commissioner Moore and I were able to be at a breakfast this morning and had some great guests in Douglas. And we were Mr. Don Grantham, who is with the G D O T and the Department of Transportation. We had Tyler Harper, we had Dominic Lorickia. We had several people from, we had some from the county, the county commission chairman, school board chairman. A lot of folks there talking about all the good things that are going on in Douglas and Coffee County. And I thought that was time well spent this morning. How'd you feel about it?
It was good.
Good. Got a lot of great things going on with our airport. And you, you have to be there sometimes to hear all the good things people say about your community. People from other communities, people from state, you know, in regional positions and in positions of authority that go into lots of other communities where they say government doesn't always work together. You know, we see it a lot of times, we hear it on TV. We are so blessed in Douglas and Coffee County. This group works together. You know, we work together with our Board of Education, with our county commissioners. And Charlie, did you get that out of what they were saying today was just the accolades to us? I was very proud of, of all the compliments that we received on y'all's behalf. I wish you could have all been there to hear it because you would be very, very proud. You'd be very proud of what's going on with our airport and what's going on with so many things to do with transportation, the bypass and all the construction and everything that we've got so much to be thankful for. We learned a lot of, a lot of neat stuff about our ports and inland ports, you know, the ports now that are really, I always thought a port had to have water, a body of water around it. But these are, they're places referred to as ports that have railway connecting them, you know, that are, that are being used to store containers from the major ports. So, but just a lot of information today. I felt like a sponge sitting there soaking up some of it, you know, and, and being kind of new to this. So thank you for that opportunity though. Thank you, Charlie. Thank y'all for doing that breakfast. So that was very good. Want to just wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Everybody be safe. And I know we've got some transportation, speaking of transportation issues, we've got some things I think Mr. Mike and I were talking about for the Fourth of July, the fireworks. We've got to reroute traffic a little bit and bear with us in that, okay? It's all going to be good. We want everybody to be safe. And that's about it, I guess, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to the staff of the city of Douglas. On last Thursday, we had that little storm come through and had seven trees in my ward to blow down. And it first responded. And he come with the bad weather was going on. Gave him a call, they said, we'll be out there just as soon as the weather's over with. And soon as the weather was over with, those guys out there cutting up trees and limbs and cutting trees in the roads and all. And they done a fantastic job, and I just want to thank them for responding like they did. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to along with more the city commissioner to be out in Savannah to the Georgia Municipal Association gathering out there. And I had an opportunity to attend two classes. And those two class was friendly citizen and the economic developer. I got a lot of nuggets out of both of those classes. And I just want to thank the city of Douglas for giving me an opportunity to go down to learn more about what I need to do to be a better city commissioner, and I do appreciate it. Also, I'd like to continue to ice everyone to keep the grass cut. And don't forget about junk day. Do not put the trash side the road or got trash on your truck and carry it to another neighborhood and dump it off. We have two hours out of the month that you can drop it off anytime. Please, ma'am, please, sir, take advantage of that and let's keep Douglas as beautiful as we can. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Prochep?
Good evening. Also had the opportunity to attend the Georgia Municipal Association Conference, the, the summer conference that we had. And as was noted earlier, we had the opportunity to attend the training classes. I know echo Commissioner Taylor's comments. That enables me, I think, to do a better job to understand what my responsibilities are as a city commissioner and then what can I do to hopefully help our staff here in my role and also help our citizens. Me and Commissioner Taylor were in that first class, the Entrepreneur Friendly Cities was the one that we took Friday. Got a lot of good information on things that other cities in Georgia have been doing to make their cities a more inviting place for people to come in and open their businesses, which, you know, I mean, it's kind of, that's the lifeblood of the community, everything, oh, economic activity. So that was very informative. We had some good presentations that were done there. And then Saturday, the class that I took was Making Citizen Engagement Work in Our Communities. I told somebody I wish I'd taken that class during my first year in office because we learned to talk to a lot, talk a lot about what we can do to encourage our citizens to stay engaged. Also, in discussing the different methods that are used by the communities and what, and considering what we do here in our city, want to thank our staff for what they do in terms of maintaining our websites, putting things on the internet, on social media. They had some presentations on the, you know, we know that social media is very, is a very popular method of, of interactioning within our society today. But when you look at some of the numbers that they, that they showed us, you know, it catches your attention for somebody who grew up with, remembers grandma's phone, grandma's phone with the old rotary dial, to thinking about, you know, what I could sit there and hold in my hand, you know, is more powerful than the computers I grew up with. I mean, it's just astounding. And then the pace of which things change. So I'm glad that GMA is offering these classes to help us stay up on and manage the change that, you know, it's not a matter of, of if change is coming, it's a matter of when. And it's a matter of how we as a, as an organization, as a community, manage the changes that come. That, that's the bottom line. And, you know, the change is here, it's happening. And the best thing we can do is learn what is changing and what we can do to make things, to make the change, the changes that are happening work in our favor. And I think our staff is staying on top of that. And we intend to even do a better job of reaching out to our citizens and making sure, you know, it's kind of interesting, some of the things that we brought up, they were asking, you know, they would ask us, well, who's doing this? Who's doing that? And, you know, not many, not many communities in our, in our state have a youth council like we do. And this team court, you know, I'm glad that we're getting that involved, you know, that, that's one of the needs that's been identified in our state is getting our, our young people involved at early ages with what goes on in our government so that they will be ready. They'll have input, and then when the time comes, when it's, when it's their turn, as they come of age to, to take the reins, they'll be ready and prepared to step in there and take these roles. And that's exactly what we mean to have happen in our, in our community. I'm thankful that we're working on that. I hope we continue to do so. On another side note, we are, I was able to, in the Leadership Coffee class, we were able to tour. Our focus this past week was on education. We toured South Georgia State College, Wiregrass Technical College, and a local privately run organization, E-CART, which helps medical personnel get the training, primarily nursing, get their certifications and the things that they need. And again, that was very informative. Again, made me appreciate all of our, our partners in our community who are working hard to ensure that our citizens have opportunities to get the education that they'll need to prepare them for employment and help them get a better life. You know, that's opening experience when you hear talking about the teachers, particularly at Wiregrass, who are on the front lines helping some of our folks who haven't had the opportunities maybe that some of us have been fortunate to have as far as having been encouraged to get their education as they were young and coming up. And they come back there and they were getting their GED, they're able to get certifications to get out there and work and, and what it does to change their lives. And those are some of the things that are going on every day that maybe we don't think about or focus about. Sometimes we have it in the newspaper on a website, and I hope we continue to publicize that because that's something good, you know, amongst all the things in our community that we worry about. I think we can be proud of the fact that we've got some top rate educational institutions that are working hard to ensure that our children and us as adults, even though some of us old timers are able to get in there and improve our skills and marketability. And so I just want to give a shout out to all those folks who are working hard out there, those institutions, and for the good work they're doing to make our community better and hopefully, you know, more educated and more, which, you know, is going to help us economically build the base that we need, provide the jobs that we want to have for our future, future generations coming up here in Coffee County. So I thank all those who are making that possible. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor Prochep. My comments are as follows. Hey, it's hot, water safety. Water safety, water safety, keep your eyes on that child. Our smaller children think that they're superheroes and don't actually know the dangers of the water. That's why they need to have adult supervision at all times. So keep your eye on the child. One of the things that I used to do with my children when we were around water, I always kept them in front of me and kept the water to my rear. Keep the child in front of me, keep the water to my rear. They have to get past me. When I give them permission to go into the water, now I turn around and I watch. Remember, one of the best rules, keep the child in front of you, the water to your rear. And take swimming classes, do not swim alone. Do not swim alone. Don't get out there boating alone. Be safe. If you catch some fish and clean them, call me. If you got cooler, come pick them up. I'm not particular about the type of fish. As long as it's free, we can deal with it. We live with it. The next thing is, my baby daughter Destiny, who's 25, that shares a birthday with me. She, when we was, when I was training her how to drive, I would always tell her, be careful of that trash can. Do you know a child can be behind that trash can? School is out. School is out. Obey the speed limits and watch out for that child. They're going to be in the streets playing basketball, they're going to be playing baseball, all type of things. Because in my neighborhood, our kids are not really playing video games, rascals always outside. So I have to be really careful when I'm in my neighborhood to make sure that I'm doing the right speed. And sometimes I have to go even slower. Vacation time or staycation, that means staying at home. One of the things that I was talking to Rodney, our library director, is I think that going on vacations are fine. Don't get me wrong, go have a good time. But I do think that when we decide to spend time with our children, just hanging out with them rascals, you understand me, just hanging out with them. Oh, no, I'm not going to hang out with the fellas, no, I'm not going to hang out over here. But I'm going to hang out with my children. I promise you, that will pay dividends. That will pay dividends. It's hard to believe that my oldest daughter is 30 years old. I cannot believe that. So spend time with your children. Time, time, time is more valuable than any materialistic thing that you can give them. The other thing is, while I was over there, I took a couple of classes. I'm gonna get credit for two, but I really should get credit for three because Commissioner Gowen was texting me the whole time in his class. Hey, Mayor, what about this right here? Oh, this is very interesting. Mayor, what about, we need to be doing this.
If I don't hit it, then I'll forget it.
I'll get happy. Next thing I know, now he gonna loop Charlie in this. Hey, hey, we already do this, dude. Okay, but this is a good thing, man. So I should get credit for that class. Right? I should get credit for that class.
If I could sign your card, I would.
Y'all just don't do any good. But the classes that I had the opportunity to take were water and sewer. Water and sewer, hey, if it's working, it's really not a problem. I mean, it's just really not a problem. Turn that faucet on, there's water. You're not calling anybody, say, hey, Ms. White Nella, just want to thank you. The water came through like it was supposed to. I hit that light switch, hey, the power come on. So, and the whole thing that we were talking about, about the water and sewer, of course, making sure it's safe, making sure that the water meets the regulations, the EPA and all the other standards. And we were also talking about, are you planning for the future? Does your city have anything in place that if another industry shows up, do you have the capacity to serve that, that industry? And I always think about, what if Gold Kiss decided to double their operations? They use a lot of water over there. Would we be able to meet that need? And of course, we talked about maintenance, having a maintenance schedule and all this and that. It was very interesting. But one of the things that they said that really intrigued me is that the average American spends $1,750 a year on bottled water. That's a lot of money. But they say a municipality that save amount of water is like 50 cent for the whole year. So you spend $1,750 for bottled water, and it's 50 cent with the city. Now, people say, oh, I want my water, oh, the salty is good, this and that. Okay, but you cook with that water that come out of that faucet. Explain that to me. So the other class I took was workforce development. So, the other class I took was workforce development. When I talk to business leaders and leaders in the community, they're always talking about workforce development, workforce development. And guess what? Pay is not the main issue. It's not paid. I was like, what? The number one issue is benefits. Benefits is number one. Number two, and I'm not gonna go down the list, is do I want to come and work for my supervisor? Is it okay when I come to work? How's that work environment? Is it, hey, get to work. Hey, get to work. Or we, hey, man, is everything okay? See, you're not your normal self, what's going on? Hey, my, my child is sick. Hey, I think we can get, get by today without you. Why don't you go home and be with your child? The people that they were talking to said that that meant more than the pay, is that when they, they didn't dread coming to work, that they enjoyed their work environment. The supervisors were, they really talked about the supervisors being human, had a real big impact. The workforce, they talked about the, the United States of America is a shortage of about 4.5 million jobs. We don't have the individuals in the workforce to fill these jobs that we're trying to find. And the, the issue comes down to is that what we landed on was work ethic. Where is that work ethic? In my grandmother's house, you went to school or you went to work? You went to school or you went to work? So, all my life, the only thing I saw was my mom and dad getting up going to work, my aunts and uncles and my grandmother getting up going to work. So, what are you supposed to do when you get out of high school, college, vocational school, job, military? Those are your choices. It's a wrap. Because when them yellow buses start rolling again, you need to be in one of those positions. Because as Grandma Elmo Lou used to say, no adults leave or in the house when I leave. You know what I mean? Nobody's in the house. So, we talked about work ethic. Does this workforce have an example of individuals getting up and going to work? That was one of the main issues. Another thing, directly to the parents, the pastors, the aunts, the uncles, one of the most disturbing statistics that they said in workforce development is that 85% of all prisoners in the state of Georgia's system do not have a high school education. 85% did not graduate from high school. So, as I was talking to the library director Rodney, get a high school diploma, man, your chances of going to jail drop. Woo! I mean, you got a good shot at that. So, the Board of Education is doing everything that they can to get our children destination graduation. But we also have to give a helping hand as parents, as community leaders. Hey, you need to take your tail to school. You know what I mean? You need to sit your tail down and listen. Look, the person up there at the chalkboard or whiteboard or whatever it is now, they already getting the check. They already getting the check. You the one that need a check. You need to sit down. And I tell folks all the time, I wish I would have paid attention when I was in school. It was just, I was young and didn't know any better. You're not your children's friend, you're their parents and you're their aunts and uncles. Make sure that they go to school. Every time I listen to somebody accept an award, they never think the person that let them get away. It's always that person that held them accountable. It's always that person that wouldn't let them cut class or wouldn't let them do it just part of the way. So, please, make sure that the child goes to school. Make sure that the child is prepared to go to school. Put them in the bed. Bedtime, 8 o'clock. Kiara, 8 o'clock. I don't care what you say, it's 8 o'clock. Go to bed. Go to bed at 8 o'clock. Get up, Pop-Tarts. Well, I don't know, do they have toaster strudels anymore? Shove a couple toaster strudels down their throat, we out the door. My wife like Tony, they can't wear that, those shoes with that. Whoa, woman, you at work. The objective is to get them out the door. You know what I mean? Pop that toaster strudel in them. Whatever she put on, let's ride. It's clean, hair done, let's roll. You know what I mean? Hey, we gotta roll. So, and the last thing is, I, I tell our citizens just about every meeting that our greatest ambassadors are our youth. They put in long hours just to have that Douglas Coffee County uniform on. So, today, our 14-year-old girls came in fourth place in the state, up there representing the City of Douglas and Coffee County. Just think about that. We got, we got 14-year-old girls out there during the summer, they have no obligation to be anywhere else, but they're out there representing us. Our 12-year-old girls came in second in the state. We lost three to five. But again, our youth are out there representing us. Where are you from? Douglas. Douglas, where is that? That's Coffee County. Oh, that's the home of them Trojans dying there. Their name carries a lot of weight. And I just want them to know that as the mayor and the commission, we're extremely proud of them, but we're exceptionally blessed to have such a fine group of young adults representing us. And I love that fact. So, with that being said, oh, just to give the citizens an update on my birthday and Father's Day. Father's Day started out a little slow, didn't really get too much. So, I was looking at everybody, a little cross-eyed around the house. I'm like, whoa, I've been begging for this for six months, not to get nothing. Then my birthday rolled around. Uh-oh. Got the Nike shoes that I've been wearing, black with the little red stripe on it. Then yesterday, payday, baby, got my golf cart. Now, with all that being said, I just have to get permission. I still had to pay for it.
You gotta get a permit for it too now, thanks to us.
Oh, I'm gonna get a permit.
You gotta get a permit and a light.
I am waiting. I just got to get a trailer so I can take it out there to Mike's golf cart. Take it out there to Mike's golf cart. I have to get a windshield, turn signals, seat belts, and a whoopee light.
I can say a trailer. Make your trailer back here.
You got it?
Got you.
Okay. Because I do want to be street legal. I, I want to be able to ride my golf cart around. It already has music, so, oh yeah, it's gonna be all the popping when I roll through there. I'm letting you know. Ah, no, woo. Hey, 100 feet, I'm gonna be 85 feet. Don't mess with me, 85. But, hey, enjoy, enjoy, enjoy the summer. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.